Hello everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hey um Pam, hello, how are you doing? Oh my god, it's been a long time, right?
I'm doing good, how are you?
I'm doing fine. How are you enjoying the new style, you know? The setup is quite different than it was the last time.
Yeah, um I you know, I appreciate you uh responding to my email because I was getting real confused. I'm like, where are the videos? And but now I understand that they won't start it tomorrow. So um you know, I've been working on my uh intermittent fasting since the second and doing good, doing good. So I'm excited to get started.
Oh awesome. How do you feel? How do you, how are you feeling right now? You know, compared to what you used to feel before?
Um I I feel a lot better. I I think uh this is the first time I've done intermittent fasting and I found that um I actually feel better when I wait a while to eat instead of just eating breakfast normally like I do without even questioning whether I'm hungry or not. And then when I do eat, usually around eleven or twelve, then I get full really fast.
Yeah.
I'm not eating as much. I still think I have to fight some of the mentality of let me eat as much, you know, like before at seven at night, let me, let me eat something real quick because I don't get to eat for a long time whether I'm hungry or not. So I'll work that out. I'm feeling, I'm feeling great.
Awesome. Yeah, this is something uh that always happens to a lot of us that you know, if we have a timing, for example, at eight P M I'm gonna have a snack and that kind of stays in our mind for a long time. And the way to really get rid of it is by not having it and then that gets reprogrammed. But you are doing awesome Pamela, I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of your progress. Do you feel more energetic after beginning the fasting? I mean, uh has it anyway changed your energy level, your productivity level?
Yes, um I think when I was uh doing the twenty-one day program, I told you a- after about uh for a couple of weeks, then I got real on and off with it. So uh but I know when I was on the whole time, I did, I felt a lot more energetic and um wanting to move. Um and so I'm, I'm really looking forward to.
Pamela?
Keep increasing that. Whoops. What just happened?
Okay, my internet is a bit. Okay, now I can. Yeah, all right, we're good. Okay.
I don't, I don't see you though. Do you have to start, restart the meeting?
Uh are you being able to see the screen? Is everybody being able to see the root chakra words?
I cannot.
You can, right? All right, great. So I believe I not just intermittent fasting, just healthier eating can really help us a lot in terms of energy, in terms of feeling more productive. Um what happens is that when we are not eating a healthy diet, you will see that you might feel a little bit more sluggish, you might feel a little bit more um lethargic. Sometimes you might be feeling more tired actually because of consuming too much carbohydrates. But on the other hand, any type of dieting, uh healthy eating, plan-based eating is going to have such a huge difference compared to unhealthy eating. And I, when you notice the energy level, the difference in energy level, you know, that's basically when we feel like we're really doing something for ourselves. We feel good for ourselves and our bodies, you know? It's like nourishing our body and so, all right. We are going to go for um another session. Much better, all right, all right. Let me know where are you all from at the moment, uh who's here? And we are going to start our session. It's going to be really helpful, especially for those who have uh the habit of binge eating, which I used to do a lot, or any kind of eating disorders. And before that, let me first take you on a journey of mind and body. How many of you are familiar with chakras? It's kind of an ancient thing and it's been around for like hundreds of years. But there is a lot of acceptance in the modern world regarding chakras. If you have heard of this term, press a one. And if you have never heard of it, press a two in the chat. Don't worry, there is no right or wrong answer. If you have ever heard of chakras, let me know in the chat with a one. Okay. Okay, some of us know about it and some of us don't. That's not a problem. So basically, all of us are in our physical bodies right now in front of our Zoom cameras, talking to each other. We are in our physical bodies, right? Other than this, there is an idea that we also have energy bodies inside us. So one way you can understand this better is, for example, suppose you go somewhere in uh in a new place and just as you enter the room, you feel a little bit bad. You feel like there's a bad vibe over here. And you just can't really place your finger, or it could also be when you meet somebody. You know, something doesn't feel right. Have you ever felt that way about meeting a person? Or it could also be the opposite, that you meet somebody or when you go somewhere, you suddenly feel really good. The energy seems so good. So there is a belief, and it is a popular belief, that we are not just physical bodies, we are also energy bodies. And energy really governs a lot of our lives. And of course, we also know about energy in another term, in terms of biology, that the food we eat, the glucose gets broken down into energy. That energy is there, but there is, what I'm talking about is more of a spiritual energy, you know? What we can call sixth sense, what we can call intuition. According to yogic lore, according to yoga, according to ancient wisdom, in fact, our body has seven wheels or chakras. Chakra is a Sanskrit word. These are the wheels, as you can see in the diagram. They are all aligned from the bottom to the top. The lower one, which is at the base of the spine, is called the root chakra. And basically, that's the one we are focusing on today. Above it is sacral chakra, solar plexus, heart chakra, throat chakra, third eye and crown chakra. So the idea of chakras is that these are like wheels or energy pools which keeps on spinning. Think of it like water or stream which keeps on moving. It's always in the flow. And of course, this is not a physical thing, it's an energy. These are energy pools which keeps on moving and moving and flowing. And according to the same ancient wisdom, it is believed that when these energy pools get blocked somehow, that is when an individual experiences different types of problems. So when it comes to root chakra, the red one at the bottom, this is the chakra that is for survival. So also, and the lower chakras you will see here are usually more earthly, more about materialistic, physical life. All of them, most of them are blocked by fear. And the higher chakras, as you go up, is more about um what should I say, enlightenment, spirituality. And it is believed that when all the chakras are aligned, that's when we are in our peak state. We perform well, we have high emotional intelligence, we have uh better wisdom, better intuition. So this is what's desired, to have unblocked chakras. So the bottom one is the root chakra, and this is basically the one which is on survival, on um nutrition, you can say, you can talk about financial security, about earning, about sleeping. It has everything to do with our physical existence on earth. So one of the things that block this chakra, the root chakra, is fear, any kind of anxiety. And it manifests in many forms. It can be nightmares, it could be a really stressful episode in your life. And when it is unblocked, with, that means when this energy is flowing and flowing in your energy pool, we usually feel safer, more secure, and we feel better, we feel more fulfilled. All our needs are met, okay? Is it too complicated for you if? If it's, if you're understanding, let me know with a yes in the chat. If it's not too complicated. Okay, so far so good. So basically, what we have learned is that other than our physical bodies, we also have, we are also energetic beings, we also have energy. And in that energy field, we have seven wheels or seven chakras. This is not me, this is ancient wisdom. This was like known by people in India thousands of years back. And a lot of people even right now believe in it and have, there is a lot of branches of science, you can say, dedicated to it, like metaphysics and others. So the lo, we start from the bottom, the lower chakra is located at the base of the spine. And this is the one which is blocked by fear. And this is the one which is more to do with earthly matter, with survival, okay? This is deeply associated with our sense of survival. And the reason why this is on this topic, although like I said, all the lower chakras are somehow associated in a similar way in the terms that all of them are blocked by fear. Because the idea is that the lower the chakras are, they're more earthly they are, and the higher they are, the more spiritual, the more enlightened they are. So but the root chakra, since it is at the lowermost, this is, this is the one which is the most earthly one, you can say. So we are dealing with fears and insecurities and nightmares. When you think about fear, what causes you anxiety? What causes you stress? When you feel there is too much competition? These are basically ideas which are usually around survival, am I right? Fear of death, fear of disease, fear of not being good enough, fear of overeating, fear of weight gain, insecurity because of body image. Almost all these things you can see falls in the category of fear, stress, security. So isn't it something like, since this is the chakra that is responsible for our physical well-being and also has something to do with eating disorders? Isn't like healing this chakra can also help us in a lot of things? Healing in the sense of unblocking it? So question time, okay? Do you tend to overeat or a lot of us don't even eat at all when we feel stressed? For example, you have a very important presentation or business meeting. Do you feel the urgency to just keep on eating or eating? Or when you're stressed about anything in life? Or do you feel like not eating at all during a time of emergency, during a time of stress? Okay. Yes. Yes. For different people, the reaction is usually different. Some of us, when we are stressed, we feel like eating a lot and some of us don't feel like eating. And some of us feel like both, you know? Sometimes we feel like eating a lot, sometimes we don't feel like eating. There was a time in my life whenever I used to feel a bit upset or depressed, I used to find comfort in food, you know? I used to just open the fridge and I used to start eating and that used to make me feel better. So that is also in that ca- category of overeating. So the biological reason, uh since we do not really want to stray away from science too much, the biological reason we overeat is mainly because of this hormone called cortisol. It's basically a stress hormone. And when it is released into the bloodstream, whenever we are stressed about any situation, this is the hormone that gets released into the bloodstream. And cortisol is also linked to an increase in appetite. So this is basically one of the reasons why we find food really comforting. And psychologists also say that most disorders, most eating disorders are in some way linked with fear or insecurity. For example, think about it, uh think of someone, a teenage girl who is, who has anorexia or has anorexia. It's basically the eating disorder of not eating at all. And it's really much more prominent among teenage women, especially in certain countries like USA, because they have the idea of being perfect, of having the absolutely thin figure. So what they do is that they deprive themselves, they starve themselves, and it sometimes even becomes fatal. So where does this idea stem from in people with anorexia, when people with any kind of eating disorders? It's usually stems from a sense of fear, like they do not feel worthy, they do not feel like a sense of belonging. They feel, what will people say about them? Otherwise, you know, if people were not really concerned about body image, all of these disorders which we know of now, anorexia, bulimia. Bulimia is another disorder where people actually vomit what they eat because they want to stay thin so badly. And this is also very fatal. So most of these disorders that we can think of, which are like really uh severe, as well as not so severe ones, even binge eating can be a kind of disorder, is usually somehow related to a feeling of insecurity, a feeling of fear, a feeling of not feeling safe, not feeling secure, not feeling in our own frames. And right now, how does it tie to the root chakra thing we're talking about? We already know that the root chakra is blocked by fear. And when it is blocked, it manifests in many ways. For example, like I said, nightmares, um eating disorders, feeling anxious, feeling stressed. The root chakra is connected to the adrenal medulla, the inner part of the adrenal gland that involves the fight or flight response. And uh we all know the fear responses are fight, flight, freeze actually, but yeah. So you can say that we are going a little bit deeper in actual science, not just metaphysics, not just woo-woo stuff. And people have actually traced it down that, yeah, this, this branch of knowledge or of ancient wisdom can, does actually have solid grounds even in science. So what, what we have found out is that where the root chakra is located, the energy field that we think of, it is also linked to that part of our adrenal gland, which is associated with fight or flight response. So this means that shutting this down can actually increase that feeling of fear. So you might be wondering, oh my god, how do I know that whether my root chakra is blocked or not? There are other kinds of manifestations, uh for example, certain physical traits could be there and there could be psychological traits. But at the same time, it may not also be that. Sometimes it could simply be our life situations or it could simply be a certain physical disease. So how do you know whether your root chakra is blocked or not? So I'm gonna ask you a question. Um do you feel stressed at this moment? Do you feel, do you feel secure? Do you feel calm? Or do you feel a little bit stressed about something, about work, about something in your life? At this moment, as we said, I don't feel stressed because honestly, there is um a rain in our area where I live in December, which is really weird. So I'm not really stressed. Okay. Carla says she's a little bit of stressed, okay? So as all of us are sitting together right now, uh Pam says she feels stressed pretty much all of the time. Yes, so this could actually be associated with root chakra. And I'm gonna show you after some time how to unblock it. And uh this is why I really love this topic. I really love this mind-body connection because it's funny how things work. Um it's true that what, what happens to us in our lives, we cannot control it. This season is becoming stressful, says Margaret. And after the year we had, all of us, you know, all over the world, it has been a stressful year. But like I said, we cannot really control the situations in our life sometimes. But we can control how we feel and we can control how we respond, which could in turn, you know, attract different situations. So basically, here is a diagram of it because I really want you to understand it, not just in your mind, but visually. So that anytime in life you feel stressed, you feel overwhelmed, you have the right techniques to feel better again, to feel more secure. And this will actually have an effect in your physical health as well. For example, when we're stressed, some of us develop headaches. Uh we feel bad in our bodies as well, right? Compared to when we feel better, we might actually develop more immunity. And scientists have not really found out this, the reason behind this mind-body connection. But we can understand that there is a huge connection between our mind and our bodies, between our energy fields and our bodies. Which is why when we are not feeling well physically, it affects in our emotional state. And when we are not feeling well emotionally, when we're going through some trauma, it usually manifests in our bodies as well, okay? So back to this diagram. We know that fear, stress, anxiety, insecurity, all these block root chakra. And one of the manifestations, not always, but one of the manifestations is eating disorder. For example, eating for comfort, binge eating, uh not eating at all because we're so afraid of our body image that we starve ourselves. A lot of eating disorders could come from it. Therefore, what will happen if we reverse it? If we reverse it, if we unblock our root chakra, if we know that now is a moment I'm feeling stressed, I feel like eating a lot. At that moment, if we can catch our pattern and if we unblock it, do you think we're going to feel safer, more secure? If we apply the right techniques, if we apply the right techniques? And at the same time, do you think that could actually help in our problem that we have with our disorder, whether it be binge eating, not feeling like eating, uh any severe as well? And it's important to add that if someone is going through like really severe, um or should I say, any kind of psychological disorder, such as eating disorder at anorexic or bulimia state, that is a kind of psychological problem. So that of course requires proper therapy. However, if someone has tried everything and isn't finding a proper solution, they can try out these techniques, okay? So how to unblock root chakra? There are multiple ways to unblock root chakra. And for example, I would want all of you to do it right now, wherever you are. Okay, I think I'm just going to. Okay, everybody is unmuted, yeah. Okay, right now, uh wherever you're sitting, just take a deep breath. And perhaps you can unmute yourself. So say these affirmations with me and say it twice, okay? First, take a deep breath and you can unmute yourself for this. Okay, say, I'm here and I am safe.
I am here and I am safe.
One more time.
I am here and I am safe.
I am safe. I am safe, I am secure. This is one of the best affirmations for root chakra. So anytime you're going through any kind of threat, any kind of physical problems, like physical dangers or any moments of insecurity, it could be physical, it could be emotional, just take a quiet spot and just breathe and say to yourself again and again, I'm safe, I'm secure, I'm healthy, I'm happy, I'm here, okay? What this does is that it brings back the focus to your mind, to your body. And the more you say it, this actually unblocks the root chakra. So you're gonna end up feeling much better, much lighter, more grounded. Now the next one, I'm nourished and supported by earth, by mother earth. Uh you can actually imagine a lot of trees when you say it, okay? I'm nourished and supported by mother earth.
I am nourished and supported by mother earth. I am nourished and supported by mother earth.
Do you feel a bit of difference in, inside you, like does something happen when you say it? The more you say it, the better you're going to feel and this applies for all of us. And
Yes.
Anytime you go, uh yes? Okay. Um anytime you go through any kind of stress factors, anxious moments, and I know that life can be really tough at times. And we really don't have, like I said, sometimes we don't have control. But this is going to really help you. When you say these words, uh I'm jumping to the fourth one, going back to the third one. I release any doubts and fears. Or if you're going through some stressful period, I release any doubts, anxiety and fears, okay? I release any doubts and fears.
I release any doubts and fears. I release any doubts and fears.
I'm safe, protected and guided in this world.
I am safe, protected and guided in this world. I am safe, protected and guided in this world.
Okay, this is like, it brings the feeling of everything is going to work out for me, everything is going to be okay. I'm going to be safe, I'm going to be doing good. It doesn't matter what the situation is. And finally, with every breath, I release the anxiety and fear within me. And with that, you just breathe out. With every breath, I release the anxiety and fear within me.
With every breath, I release the anxiety and fear within me.
Awesome, okay. So this might seem a little bit childish, however.
Not at all.
Not at all, awesome, yes. To many people, you know, I, I was kind of apprehensive about how my audience is going to take it. Although it is really normal, especially in the yogic community and people who practice meditation, right?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, awesome. So this is like your secret weapon, your secret mantra. Anytime you feel stressed, all you have to do is just bring back the focus to yourself, take a deep breath in and say, I'm safe, I'm here. I release the anxiety, the fear, the doubt, I'm fine, I'm safe. And you know, the more you do it, you're going to feel really peaceful, you're going to feel really grounded and centered. So this affirmations are one way to do it. And there are more as we go on. So is everybody clear on it, like um? Do you have any questions? If you're clear on it, let me know with a yes, with a one or a yes in the chat.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, great. Okay. Okay. So another thing you could do, some more things you could do, there are, there are multiple things you can do actually. It's just that, you know, it's so cool that we are always equipped with the tools we need to heal ourselves or to make our own lives, our emotional, physical, psychological. We always have the tools to always heal and make this better. Another thing you can do to unlock root chakra is practice mindfulness. So you could do it in a lot of ways, walking barefoot on grass. You could walk on grass anyways, but studies have shown that walking barefoot is actually much better on grass. It feels like you're, you have a connection with earth when you walk barefoot on grass. You can also lay down on grass, although I don't know how applicable it would be, but it really feels so much more when you're in the womb of mother earth. And when you walk barefoot. And interestingly, in the modern world, none of us do that, right? We don't walk barefoot uh on grass or on anywhere, but yes, and it shows. Yes, and it shows, I mean, people who does the research, you can say scientists and doctors. It shows that, for example, you guys know of acupuncture, so there are actually pressure points. So when we walk barefoot, it sometimes is actually better depending on the surface. But when we walk barefoot on grass, it's kind of therapeutic, it's like a therapy. And also the closeness of nature helps us. You could meditate, you could do some therapy, you could have nutritious meals. And when it comes to meals, fruits and vegetables with the color red unblocks root chakra. So you could have more tomatoes, strawberries, cherries, and anything red you couldn't think of. So, and there are multiple ways you can do the grounding exercises, such as like this one, or just sitting and breathing. And listening to soft music, all these are just, it makes you more mindful in your mind and in your body. And in this, it helps you with unblocking root chakra. So some of the things I would like to say is that if you are going through some kind of eating disorder. If you're going through some kind of problem, whether it be binge eating or any kind of disorder, uh, one. Thing you could do is not do any kind of fat diets. By that, I mean crash diet. Because what happens is when we deprive ourselves, we feel much more hungrier. And then we kind of binge eat, uh, which we don't want to do. So instead have some regular hours, when, when it is fasting. It's more of a detox because your body is aware that after so-and-so time, it's going to get its nu- new nourishment. And it gets prepared, you also stay hydrated. When we fast, it's better to have water normally and. In fact, more, the more hydrated you are, the better. I mean, not too much, not excess, but. That's basically better, but crash dieting is like starving ourselves and that's when our body begins to. Be plated, ev- eventually begins to eat itself up. So the less you have unhealthy meals. The more you stay away from fat diets, the better you can, um, have more control on your meals, okay? And also, if you have a timing, for example, at so-and-so time, I'm going to have so-and-so meal. So if you don't skip those meals, you will see that you will have more control on what you're eating. Usually when we binge eat or when we eat a lot, it happens because of hunger. It happens because of mood, because of stress. So when we, for example, it's three P M. and I feel really hungry, no, I do not feel hungry, I feel like eating something. Uh, because I'm stressed. So when I know that at eight P M. I'm already going to have another meal. That's kind of acts like, uh, an anchor. Also, you're gonna feel more full and like Pamela said at the beginning. When we have regulated meals, we actually do not feel that excessive, um. It's not hunger, that excessive need or desire to go out of our ways to eat, you know? It kind of gerbs our cravings. When we have a regulated timing, when we are doing any kind of proper dieting or when we are eating healthy. And when we have regular hours, you could also do yoga. Yoga is really good for unblocking root chakra. In fact, there are certain poses there, but overall, any kind of movement, you could do dancing, you could go to the gym. So basically. The root chakra is our energy portal, our energy pool that is directly connected to our bodies. So the more you're gonna move it. If you dance, if you do yoga, if you run, it's said to unblock the root chakra. And also, it also helps you with stress. Anytime you feel stressed, what happens is that stress gets stored in our body. Trauma, stress. So the more you're gonna move it, the more is that going to get released. So, and often you will see that people who sit a lot for too many hours in front of the. Uh, what should I say, in front of the screens, like ninety-five job folders. You will see that they feel, they experience more stress because they're moving enough and also because they're taking a lot of stress. That is not getting an outlet. So the more you're gonna move and the more you're going to shake, it's going to be better. For, for our overall health. And also, all these things take a bit of time, right? These things takes a bit of time, takes practice. If you do yoga for one day, that may not work. We have to keep up the habit, we have to be consistent. However, the more you're gonna do it, the more you're gonna eat healthier. The more you're gonna practice mindfulness, the more you're going to ground yourself. Now that we know that grounding, this term exists, you know? Before, we just knew that I feel uns- unsafe, I feel insecure, I feel anxious. Now we know that, okay, I'm feeling anxious, I'm feeling stressed, I feel like I need some food for no reason, I feel like overeating. All I need to do is just sit somewhere and perhaps say, I'm safe, I'm secure, listen to some music. Make a really healthy meal, right? So now we know these are grounding exercises and these exist. And now we can apply these tools to help ourselves. Another thing, since the root chakra has all to do with our bodies. Taking care of your body will also help you, for example, doing pedicure, you could go for a massage. Uh, things that really hamper your body, cultivating good eating habits, right? So is this helpful, people? Let me know. Is so far, is it helpful if you're understanding? Let me know with a one in the chat. And if you have any questions, if you didn't understand anything so far. Uh, let me know, okay? All good, so everybody is understanding, great. So, okay, one thing I wanted to touch on is, and it goes for everything. Weight loss really is eighty percent diet and twenty percent workout. So a lot of us may feel like I'm just going to overeat right now and then I'm going to just lose it out with a lot of workout. And in, what should I say, in realistic terms, this really doesn't work. Because. The first things which, which occurs is that we really cannot lose so much weight because our body has a certain, uh, what should I say? It has a capacity, yeah, metabolism is there. And beyond it, it cannot really lose weight so fast. So if we're gaining more calories compared to how much we're losing with workout, so. It never is a feasible plan, but when you will see that when you adopt healthier eating habits. Like, um, for example, what we're doing, avoiding sugar, but we allow ourselves one cheat day so that we don't really, uh. We don't feel too much deprived. And when you're eating regular meals at regular hours. When you incorporate lots of fresh vegetables and fruits, you also feel more cheerful and, um. There were researchers done by people, people who used to, al- also there is this channel called Yes Theory, I guess. They and people who are like really scientists, they also did it, that people who eat much healthier food, like fruits and vegetables. They feel more energetic, they feel more cheerful compared to people who have unhealthy meals, like junk food. And all kinds of fries. People who have more healthier options, they feel more cheerful. And it's kind of weird, right? I mean, it's beautiful that this mind and body connection goes so deep. So I would suggest all of you to, whatever is working for you, it doesn't have to be intermittent fasting. Even if it's just counting calories, intermittent fasting is really good. Because it helps us work on, um, curbing those cravings we have. Cravings and binge eating these, and also not being able to. Um, what should I say? Not being able to control when to eat how much. Sometimes we eat the wrong type of food in the wrong amount. These are the things which usually hampers our weight loss journey in the long run. So the more discipline we have, the more we watch out for these. And also when we allow one day of cheat day, we're going to see that it's gonna take few months. But you're really going to be able to sustain that weight loss and you're also not going to be able to lose it so fast. Because then the healthy eating, um, the. Better lifestyle becomes your regular lifestyle. So you won't really even need to work too hard to lose weight afterwards, right? So, I would like to give you guys a homework, okay? So this is something you could do and you could post it in the group or you could email, you could post it in the Facebook group, perhaps that would be better. Find out habits that delay or prevent your weight loss. So this could be eating at two M. at night. For no reason, this could be not having enough time to work out, okay? So find out what habits are keeping you from getting your ideal weight. And next, create strategies to overcome them. So if you're eating a lot at two A M. at night, uh, two A M. in the morning. And what you could do is that, don't even go to the kitchen or just have some water instead of food. Or just sleep earlier, sleeping early always helps in any kind of fitness journey. Whatever it is, try to find out the habit and try to create a strategy that is practical for you. To overcome that, um, habit which damages your weight loss plan, okay? So you're going to give it to us in, um, what is the day today? Sunday. Give it to us like by. Wednesday in the group or in email. So this is basically more for you because when you're actually going to work on it, when you're gonna sit down and you're gonna trace your habits. You're gonna trace your lifestyle, okay? So what is preventing me from losing weight or what's delaying my weight loss? When you're gonna think about it, it's, you're gonna activate the process. And when you're gonna create the strategies to overcome that, you would already have done fifty percent of the work that, okay? I know this is the problem right now with my life and with my lifestyle, so now I'm gonna do so-and-so to fix it. Weight loss really is more about mindset, almost everything is really more about mindset. When you are determined, when you have it in your mind that this is what you're going to do. And this is how you're going to do it, it always gets so much easier for you to actually overcome. Or to actually achieve anything. Okay, so are you guys going to do the homework? Let me know with a yes. Because I, you know, I don't want it to be another one of those things that you would watch. And you would listen and you would be like, yes, this is really helpful, this is really good. And then after a few hours, you're going to forget it because not until we apply what we learn. We are really not really going to see the results, right? So the more you're going to have your focus on it, the more you're gonna apply it, you will see that nobody even needs to help you. What I want from this program is that after you complete this program, you never need another personal trainer. You never need another diet plan or you never need another fitness program. Because by then, you'll be in control, you'll be in charge, you will know that I know what to do. And I'm not going to lose my fitness anymore. I'm not going to need another thing anymore. Because then you will have the power, okay? So great, all of you are awesome. Okay, Carla said that she will not post on F B. Okay, you don't have to post specifically on Facebook. But you could just email me, um. The idea is that you find it, I, it's like I'm your accountability partner, okay? So when we have something and we're like, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it, and we may not end up doing it. But when we think of it in this way, that, okay, I need to submit it by so-and-so day, then we really do it. So this is going to like, make you, help you really get the task done, to really focus on this task. So right now, we're going to do something different, we're going to do a meditation. Uh, to feel more secure, to feel better and to unblock our root chakra. Okay, so I would like for you all to kind of like. Be a bit comfortable, if you have any, anything that's distracting you, perhaps to turn it off, your cell phones or anything. And all of you are sitting, I guess, am I right? Sitting on a chair?
Yes.
Okay, so why that is important is because if you're sitting on a chair. Uh, you have your feet on the ground and this is also another grounding exercise. Uh, this grounding technique you could also do at work or anywhere, when you're feeling a bit stressed, when you feel overwhelmed. Imagine, you're, first of all, you need to plant your feet firmly on the ground, like your feet should be touching the ground. Properly. And then on your chair, you're going to imagine that your ground and the feet is connected. Perhaps you can imagine, you can visualize certain strings going from the ground to. Going from your feet to the ground and from the ground to the feet, you're gonna feel anchored to mother earth, in other words, okay? So this is a grounding technique, it's very popular among people who practice it. We're not actually going to do that, we're going to do the meditation, but what's important is that you feel the ground beneath your feet. Because the root chakra is all about the ground, the earth, uh, what should I say? It's all about feeling grounded on there. Yeah, so we are grounded, yeah, okay. Great, you get it? So I would like for you all to just place your feet, if, if it's possible. Place your feet on the ground, barefoot, without any shoes or socks if you have one. Okay, and if you, if you have any distractions, you can turn it off. Also, if anything is bothering you, like any light which is too much. Or any belt or anything which you find uncomfortable, perhaps you could ease it. So that you can prepare yourself mentally for this meditation. It's going to be a short meditation, it's going to be about feeling grounded and feeling centered and secure. Can you listen to the music?
Yes.
Okay, also why I'm using the color red is because red is also the root chakra color. So it is said that the more you see red, the better you feel or the more it unblocks root chakra. Okay, can you listen to both the music and my voice clearly?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome, okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, let's do something to feel better and to feel more secure. So I would like for all of you. To sit down, sit straight, plant your feet firmly on the ground. Let your body be loose, let your arms be loose, only your spine should be straight. Take a deep breath in. You can close your eyes if you want. Take a deep breath in and breathe it out. Take a deep breath in. And breathe it out. This session is going to be about feeling secure, about feeling grounded. It is something you can do by yourself as well later on. So we're going to imagine. We're gonna close our eyes and we're going to imagine a soft red light. At the base of our spine. I want you to imagine that the ru- light, the red light. Is glowing very brightly at the base of your spine. This is like a healing light for you. This red light is going to heal your root chakra. It's going to bring about a sense of balance, safety and security. Take a deep breath in again. And breathe out. Take another deep breath in and breathe out. If you have any thoughts, simply observe them. In your mind, visualize the red light at the base of your spine. In your mind, visualize the red light at the base of your spine. It's glowing, it's rotating, it's healing your root chakra.
Yes.
Healing your body, your energy body and your mind. Now I want you to imagine where you're sitting. There is a white light surrounding you. Surrounding you from a few inches above your head, all the way down to the ground. This white light is completely around your body. This light is like a healing mechanism. Inside this light, your body, your mind, your energy, everything is getting healed. Visualize the red light at the base of your spine. And at the same time, feel the ground beneath your feet. Perhaps it feels cold, feel that connection with the earth. And take a deep breath in and breathe out. This is a safe zone for you. You're completely surrounded by a white light. A white light that is healing every cell of your body. And just breathe in a relaxed state. Take a deep breath in and breathe out. The red light on your spine is healing the root chakra. While the white light around you is healing your physical body. It's healing. All your emotions, it's healing the energy field. Stay here for some time with your feet planted on the ground. And just focus on your breathing. I'm safe. I am safe. I'm secure. I am secure. I'm happy. I am happy. I'm healthy. I am healthy. Everything will always work out for me. Everything always works out for me. I am always protected and safe. I'm always protected and safe. I want you to imagine. The white light that is surrounding your body. It's turning brighter. Its intensity is much, much brighter. If you are experiencing any pain, any discomfort in any part of your body. Now you feel much better. That white light is healing every part of your body. And it's soothing any kind of discomfort there may have been. This white light is healing you emotionally, mentally, physically. It's like a safe zone, you can create anytime you want. You're completely safe, you're secure. I want all of you to open your eyes slowly. Take a final deep breath in and breathe out, and yes, you are here back with us. So, do you feel any difference after doing this meditation?
I do, this is Pam, I feel very calm inside, very calm.
Awesome, do you feel a little bit more centered? Do you feel like secure? If you were worried or if you were anxious, do you still have that feeling? Okay, awesome, Marisa feels relaxed. Awesome, awesome, okay, so we always have all the tools we need. And all the power we need is already within us. Anytime you feel stressed, and it doesn't matter where you are, even if you are in your car, in someplace. All you need to do is bring back your focus on your body, and imagine the ground connecting your feet. Imagine yourself being surrounded by a white light. And also, something um which might seem like it's diverting from this topic, but. I've seen, and according to the law of attraction, when we are feeling more safe, more secure, man, when we're feeling calm. We also attract better events in our life, according to the law of attraction. When we feel more negativity, when we are having more negative thoughts, that's when we attract more negative events in our life. And this is why when we are afraid, when we are anxious, it's always a good idea to bring back our minds to a state of. Peace and calm, and also not for this only, you will see that you will have much more control in your life. If you're worried about something, if you are anxious about something, and when you can again tap back in into that calm and peace energy. It's like taking control back, it's like now I know what to do because I'm calm, whether it be a problem in my career. Or in any aspect of my life, instead of feeding that anxious energy. You can always now bring yourself back and feel grounded, centered, and create a decision. From this point of feeling centered, and as we have noted all throughout this uh session. It also is linked with our eating habits, so the more grounded we feel, the better eating uh habits we develop. The better sleeping habits we develop, the more we take care of our body, and the more disciplined we are in terms of our life. In terms of fitness, sleeping, eating, or anything like that. That's when our eating disorders will also go away, so if you have enjoyed this session, let me know, and uh. It's always awesome, I always love spending my time with you all, I hope I have been able to deliver something of value. That you were benefited by it, thank you so much for joining me in this session, and I'm going to see you soon. On Wednesday, thank you once again, and take care, much love to you all.